Going to go ahead and call this July 17, 2017, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order, and I would ask if Nikki could lead us tonight in our pledge of allegiance, please.
Pardons to your flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice on all.
Thanks for leading us, and thanks again for coming this evening. We'll move on to our first order of business, which is our communications from the public. And this is time set aside for the public to comment on items that are on the agenda, but not advertised as a public hearing. So if you have any comments for the council tonight, just your name and address for the record, please, when you approach the podium. Mary?
Good evening, Mary Flowers, Citizens for Better Flathead. Excuse me. 35 Fourth Street West in Kalispell. And I have three topics I wanted to speak to briefly. Start off with the fact that we're very pleased to see the city moving forward with a request for proposals for curbside recycling. I think that's a viable option, and I hope to see that be successful for the city. I do want to just speak to the issue of single-stream recycling and the pros and cons of that. I know that your request for proposal speaks to that, but I think it's important to keep in mind that in this area, transportation costs are one of the biggest barriers to recycling. And so getting that material to distant markets means that you have to be able to make whatever margin you can in the material you collect to cover those transportation costs to make it viable. So what the county's program is, is a source separated, as you're aware, that Valley Recycling operates. And so they send individual bales of mixed plastic and metals and paper, and they're able to get a higher value for that. By going with a single stream, you're going with the lowest-value bales that are possible. And so I hope that as you go through this bid meeting on the 24th, and as you meet with possible bidders, that you query a little bit about, should you be including other options so that source separated at the curb may be more financially viable for the bidder to bid on? And it may also mean that those materials actually get to market. And I would encourage you to have some kind of requirement that if you go with a single stream, that you make sure that doesn't end up just getting shipped out of the area and not recycled. So on that point, I think I've made my point. Secondly, I want to appreciate the parking garage. Came downtown this morning, was able to find on-street parking early in the morning, but by midday I couldn't find on-street parking anywhere downtown, so pulled into the garage and was delighted to have that as an option, and just really appreciate the fact that it's here. And it seems to be pretty full, so that's good, too. Finally, I want to comment on the letter that you sent to the county regarding the planning board meeting at which a number of the councilors really spoke inappropriately, and I think your letter very appropriately addressed that to the county and asked for the county to take some meaningful action. And when I asked for the county to, what the response was, and got this very short, two-sentence letter that basically isn't really clear what the intent was, and got the impression that they didn't really feel that the response was requested from the city, I would encourage you to consider reemphasizing the issues that you raised. I think as one that works with the public and tries to get the public to attend these hearings and to make sure that we have meaningful opportunities, that was a very intimidating meeting for the public to sit through and to even think about if they come, if they would be willing to stand up and speak. And we certainly had our new executive director attended that meeting when he was in town, and I think it was quite shocking to come to the community and see that that was a level of respect that the public received and that you, as the city government, received from those planning board members. So I don't think you need, you should have to have a thick skin to speak up at a public meeting, and I think it's really important to not let this drop, and I appreciate the leadership you've shown, and I think a lot of folks do, and would encourage you to continue forward. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mary. Further public comment tonight? Further public comments? Not seeing any. We will move on to our, actually, we'll stay with the public. Any volunteer board reports tonight? Volunteer board reports? Not seeing any. We will come back to council. Richard, volunteer board report, please.
The Climate Action Plan Committee continues its work this, tomorrow, at 5:00 here in City Hall. We'll be having a, essentially, it's a work session for us to work on strategies dealing with each one of our major topics. So I encourage the public to come as well, whatever public wants to come, and participate, but we'll be dividing into little work groups to work on strategies, on implementation of some of our recommendations.
Great. Thanks, Richard. Further volunteer board reports from the council? Not seeing any. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the June 19 minutes, or can I have a motion for approval? Frank?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Secuted by Counselor Williams. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and the motion carries unanimously. Michelle, we'll move on to our two public hearings tonight. We'll start with item 6A, which will be Resolution 17-22, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 5, Aquatic Invasive Species Prevention of Title 13 of the Whitefish City Code to Comport with the Regulations and Protocols of Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks. And this is on page 86 of your packet. Angie?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My staff report starts on page 104 of your packet, and I apologize, the way that I did this was sort of confusing. I did the staff report covering both the agreement, proposed agreement with the state and then amendments to the ordinance, because they kind of seemed like they went together. So I'll just cover the ordinance first, and I think a lot of the questions you probably have will have to do with the agreement itself. So I won't reiterate this entire process we've been through. We did give you an update on our AIS program, I believe, at the last city council meeting. After we implemented our inspections, the state had raised some concerns about our decontamination procedures and about the charge for the decontamination procedures. We met with the state after that meeting, and they suggested some actually fairly minor changes to our ordinance. The three big changes that you'll see in front of you is we amended the definition of AIS to track with the state. We now define AIS as those organisms defined by the state. We substituted the definition of vessel instead of watercraft. And again, that's just to track with state law. That's how they define vessel. It's a little bit broader than watercraft. And finally, in the prohibitions, we clarified that no person can launch a high-risk vessel into Whitefish Lake without first having the vessel decontaminated when decontamination is required by an authorized agent of the city or the state. And this is basically allow, to allow our inspection staff to perform a risk assessment of vessels and then to direct them to the decontamination station as needed. So they're fairly minor changes. And again, most of your questions, I anticipate, will probably have to do with the actual agreement, which we'll get to after our next public hearing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Frank?
Angie, what is, what is the need for, what were they concerned about by deleting the reference to or interior water-holding compartments?
Sure. That was one of Tom Boo's concerns, and he basically said, "Any boat has an interior water holding." And it was, it was just kind of a technicality that Tom really didn't want to see in that ordinance.
I'm not sure how I would understand an internal freshwater compartment or potable water compartment being excluded, but if it's a water compartment that is accessible to the waters of, that the craft is launched into, why would we want to exclude that from inspection? Or why would the state want that excluded from inspection?
And Frank, I don't necessarily think that they want to exclude things from inspection. Tom was just worried about the breadth of that. And I think, again, when we get to the MOU, you'll, it'll be clear what they're going to allow and what they won't allow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions for Angie from the council? Mike, did you have anything to add before we go to our public hearing? Okay, thanks. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be our own ordinance 17-22, and we'll hold that public hearing now. Any public comment or testimony this evening? Any public comments? Not seeing any. I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion or a motion. Katie?
I would move to approve ordinance 17-22, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 5, Aquatic Invasive Species Prevention of Title 13 of the Whitefish City Code to Comport with the Regulations and Protocol of Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks.
Thanks, Katie. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Secuted by Counselor Hildner. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Michelle, thanks, Angie, for working on this, and extend our appreciation to the department as well.
I will.
If you don't mind. Thanks. We'll move on to item 6B, which will be Resolution 17-26, a resolution approving the terms of a public recreational trail easement with Winter Sports Incorporated. This is on page 107 of your packet. I just want to make note that Leslie Hunt, the Board Chairman of Whitefish Legacy Partners, is here this evening, in case we have any questions for Leslie. Angie?
Sorry, I'm just trying to find where my staff report begins. So I guess I won't go through my entire staff report. As you know, Whitefish Legacy Partners is moving forward with their Closed the Loop campaign, and this is the final piece of the portion of the trail that we'll go through, the house conservation easement. Back when we approved the public recreational trail easement through Stoltz's property, we entered into a letter of intent with Winter Sports, Inc. And through negotiations, Whitefish Legacy Partners did the primary negotiations with Winter Sports, Inc., but we have arrived at an easement. And just to hit some of the high points of the easement, it's going to grant a two-point acre trailhead, and within that trailhead, there's going to be a winter trail loop. And Leslie, you interrupt me at any time if I'm misspeaking. I know you have a better idea of how this is going to look. A year-round trail of about a half-mile, and then some, a trail that's going to be winter use only. It also provides for an alternative easement in the event that W, Winter Sports, decides to change their road configuration. Some of the trails go over existing roads, so in the event that they want to terminate that easement, they will provide us with an alternative easement, which you can see on one of the maps. And it also provides for another potential easement through Lookout Ridge to ensure connectivity with the trail that's going to be located on Stoltz's property. As always, the city, through its MOU with WLP, is responsible for designing, construction, and maintaining the trail system. Let's see, anything interesting? The prohibitions on the use of the trail are similar to other trail, other trails that run on private property. In fact, I think they're identical to the prohibitions on Iron Horse. And finally, the city or Whitefish Legacy Partners has agreed to reimburse WSI up to $1,750 a year for their property taxes. So other than that, it looks like most of the easements we've seen with Whitefish Trail, and it'll be a good addition.
Thanks, Angie. Any questions for Angie? Leslie, anything to add?
No, that's me.
Great, thanks. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be our own 17-26, Resolution 17-26. We'll hold that public hearing now. Any comments tonight on this item? Any public testimony? Not seeing any. I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion or a motion. Jen?
I'd move to approve Resolution 17-26, a resolution approving the terms of a public recreational trail easement with Winter Sports, Inc.
Thanks, Jen. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Secuted by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? Just a big shout-out to Winter Sports Incorporated and everyone that worked very diligently to pull this all together. It's going to be an incredible amenity to our trail system here in Whitefish. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously as well. Michelle, we'll move on to item 7A, which is Resolution 17-27, a resolution approving the terms of a vessel inspection station operation agreement between the City of Whitefish and Montana Department of Fish Wildlife and Parks. And this is on page 128 of your packet. And we'll stay with Angie again.
Thanks. I'd just like to point out that the actual operation agreement is on page 91. There was kind of a mix-up. I got my stuff to Michelle in a kind of disorganized manner, so I apologize for that. So again, we have always contemplated entering into some sort of agreement with the state to allow us to perform inspections at State Park and at City Beach. The Montana Invasive Species Act allows the department to enter into these kind of agreements with entities that wish to operate their own inspection stations, and after many, many months, we think that we have something that's actually going to be agreeable. So again, just to hit some highlights, the agreement itself is fairly general. It provides that we're going to use Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks protocols to train our employees. It allows us to operate our two inspection stations at City Beach and State Park in accordance with some program protocols that were created by Whitefish Lake Institute and the city in joint efforts. So I'd like to thank Whitefish Lake Institute for doing that. I know it was an undertaking that was kind of time-intensive in a very short timeframe. So thanks, Mike. And finally, it kind of provides a breakdown of how communication with respect to the inspection stations go. For instance, what happens if the state knows of a mussel-infested watercraft that's headed towards Whitefish Lake? How our communications go if we were to find an AIS-infected watercraft? And so it kind of sets forward those, those, just line of command, sort of. We have passed this by Amy and Tom, including our protocols that were created, and have been told that they are agreeable to them. So we have every hope that the state's going to sign this. And again, what I would point out as far as decontamination is, WLI is no longer charging for decontamination, although it is a donation if people wish to make it. And our protocols that, again, were passed by at least two people in the state that we're dealing with, there would be mandatory decontamination of high-risk vessels, which would exclude those with ballast tanks or bags that have not been out of the water for 30 days, those that have been in a mussel-infected waterway in the last 30 days, those with unverified standing water, and those that inspectors deem are too dirty to inspect. And in the protocols, Mike did a great job of breaking down numerous different scenarios and what would be required in those different scenarios. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mike's probably better to answer any questions about what's actually happening on the ground.
Thanks, Senator. I'll take a first, no, no.
Sorry, I didn't hear on my microphone.
Oh, no, you can hear me.
I have your teacher voice.
Yeah, you totally had your teacher voice on. We're just fine. So I'll take my first shot at it, and then Mike can chime in. You know, the state actually raised that with us, and the state has said that they're just not regulating it, that they think it's an impossibility, because where do you have them inspected? They don't apparently, and I don't have the expertise, again, I'm going to, Mike, take a shot at it, but they don't apparently take on much water. So totally understand your concern, and it was something that we discussed with the state, and the state's currently kind of just not addressing.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mike Copel, Director of the Whitefish Lake Institute. On that issue, Richard, according to Tom Boo's, that's the single most common question he receives. And they've been working with Montana Float Plane Association to convey education and outreach to that group, which apparently have been really receptive. And, but of course, there's an inherent risk with this activity. One of the good things about float planes is that they're up in the air, and so they've got a pretty good dry time up there in between water bodies. Most don't take on any water at all, some can, but from a state level, this is being addressed through education and outreach.
Thanks.
Further questions for Mike or Angie, for that matter? Frank?
Mike and Maria, you guys may have better. What has been the attitude so far of those boaters that we've had to say, "We need to contaminate or decontaminate your boat"? Have there been any issues? Has everybody been, "Oh, I got it, no problems"? What's, what's been the attitude?
From the City Beach side and the State Park side, we've had, the majority of individuals have been very receptive to it. We've certainly had some individuals question, but by the time that they've made it to the decontamination station and had a little bit more of a conversation and a little more education, most people have come around and understood the importance of it.
Do we, do we have any issues with the draining of any tanks either at City Beach or at State Park? Is there any draining of tanks at that area that we have any concerns that the water would run into the lake itself from any of those sources? Or do we do all of that draining and everything else is done at the decontamination station?
The, well, I will have Mike elaborate on that, but we're not allowing individuals to drain at City Beach. So if there's a decontamination that needs to happen, it is going to happen at the, at the decontamination station. I'm sure there's probably some water that, that will come out, but I'm sure Mike can elaborate on that.
So the public is being highly encouraged to pull their transom plug prior to getting to a boat launch. If they don't, and they show up at State Park or City Beach, they're directed to pull up to the overflow parking lot at City Beach to pull their transom plug and to drain their vessel. Same thing at State Park. They're being directed to the parking lot, the main parking lot that's away from the lake, so that any effluent doesn't drain back into the water body.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mike or Angie? Not seeing any? Discussion or can I have a motion, please?
I'll go ahead and move to approve Resolution 17-27, a resolution approving the terms of a vessel inspection station operation agreement between the City of Whitefish and Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks. The resolution approving the terms of a vessel inspection station operation agreement between the City of Whitefish and Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Secuted by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? I have one question, kind of unrelated, but since I have Maria, Dana, and Mike in the room, are we all squared away with the FY '18 budget in terms of budgeting appropriate, you know, funds for the program for next summer? Adam, do you have any thoughts on that, too?
So Mike followed up with me, and we have addressed that. It was in the budget already, and we'll have it detailed on the, it's actually out of the water fund, so you can see what that budget will look like for WLI.
Great, thanks, Dana. Appreciate that. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously as well. Thanks for coming tonight, Mike. We'll move on to item 8, communications from the city manager, Adam Hammett. You have Adam's report enclosed with your packet. Any questions for Adam? Adam, any additional item, oh, Andy?
Yeah, Adam, I just had one question, comment about the parking structure and bicycle issues. Because I ride my bike up there sometimes just for the views. I'm like, oh, am I going to get in trouble? Is that, is that a problem?
Excuse me. You know, I think for the most part, it's not an issue. What we're seeing is we're seeing kids ride up there, and then they're racing down. And so when they come around some of those corners, if there was a car coming up, it could be a bad issue. So that's some of the stuff that we're trying to address. Same with skateboarders. They're trying to go down the ramp as fast as they can, and, you know, sometimes it's tough to see through those concrete walls to see what's coming up, Adam, so that's what we're seeing there.
Anything else to report on, Adam?
No, I don't think so.
Great, thanks for the report. And we'll move on to item 8C, which is the discussion of our 911 dispatch center funding. And I know Katie's our representative, as well as Chief Dial, so I might just go ahead and turn that, this over to Katie or Bill, whoever would like to update the council on, on the direction we're heading regarding the funding.
And I can, I can chime in first, if you want. So kind of the way this, this came about is the county manager reached out to me and said, "There's just enough of a hubbub going around." And I know there's been a lot of discussion and different news articles and stuff at some of the Kalispell City Council meetings. And so he reached out and he said, "Well, how about the managers get together and we start to think about what we want to do next, whether it's that we want to go back for a public vote, or just what it might be?" I thought it would be good to get the council's feelings so that I represent you guys accurately when I go into these meetings as to what your feelings are. There's a pretty good history to this that I know, and I just want to make sure that when, that when I go in there, I represent what you guys would like me to. So that's kind of how it started.
Katie?
I was not present at the last 911 meeting. Chief Dial was, but the one that I did attend prior to, the understanding was that we all could agree that we need to find a change in our funding source for this 911 center, and that we would try to get together a funding committee composed of all three municipalities in the county to come together to start searching for funding sources, plans, and then get that back to our municipalities and our representatives by the end of the year. This is one thing where everyone is agreeing that we need to do something, and we just need to figure out the timeline, the actual mechanism that we utilize to make an efficient funding source for the 911 center. I don't know if the chief has anything else to add on top of that.
Yeah, at the, at the last meeting, we discussed a little bit of the funding options. And, you know, the big things we have faced in this town and valley is we have a, probably a $50 million Jo project. We have, what, a $17 million moldown, and we could just go on and on and on. The big issue that's frustrating for the 911 board is we had an agreement that was handshake agreement by all four entities, and at the 11th hour, two Kalispell council members decided that they just were not going to address it. Kalispell, they've given the Kalispell Police Department directions to look at, to see what it would cost for them to be an independent dispatch, which they can't do. I don't know why they're even looking at that. Our budget this year, we ended, I think, with right around a 31% reserve, so we're looking really good in capital. But, you know, like, we keep telling people, we're only one lightning strike or one forest fire away from not having communications in the valley. So we really do need to move forward. I think with Adam talking with the other city managers, I think that's a real good direction to go. And then if we can just convince this Kalispell City Council that the combined dispatch center is the only way to go and the only effective way to go, and the best way for all of our citizens in the Flathead, I think we'll eventually come up with some type of a funding source. That's about it.
Anything further to add from the council? Or Katie? Thanks for the update, Adam.
Okay.
We will move on to item 9A, which is a requirement to ratify and re-adopt our June 6, 2017, letter to the county commissioners. I'll need a form-
we're only one lightning, lightning strike or one forest fire away from not having communications in the valley. So we really do need to move forward. I think with Adam talking with the other city managers, I think that's a real good direction to go. And then if we can just convince this Kalispell City Council that the combined dispatch center is the only way to go and the only effective way to go and the best way for all of our citizens in the Flathead, I think we'll eventually come up with some type of a funding source. That's about it.
Anything further to add from the council? Or Katie? Thanks for the update, Adam.
Okay.
We will move on to item 9A, which is a requirement to ratify and re-adopt our June 6, 2017 letter to the county commissioners. I'll need a formal motion to ratify and re-adopt the letter that we mailed to the commissioners. For the record, we have not received any form of response from the county commissioners. I did receive a letter from, that was addressed to the planning board and the planning and zoning office from the commissioners. And I'll just briefly share with the audience and the public here tonight, the content of that letter. It's dated June 28, 2017. Dear Planning Board Members, it encloses a letter from the city of Whitefish dated June 6, 2017, to the Flathead County Board of Commissioners. Please be reminded that how a message is sent is as important as the message itself. It is essential the planning board conduct itself in a manner that does not distract or detract from the issues before it. And it was signed by all three county commissioners and I was copying on this letter to the planning board and planning and zoning office. But again, no formal response received yet by the city from the commissioners. With that said, we will need a motion to ratify and adopt the letter.
I would move that we ratify and re-adopt our June 6 letter, 2017, to the city county commissioners.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Fury, further discussion on the motion? Richard?
I get the impression from the letter that the county commissioners sent to the, I'm assuming it was the chair of the plan, the county planning board, that it does not really address the issues that we brought up in our letter in any detail or specificity. And I think that what we should, or I'm going to suggest, that we might send another letter to the county commissioners specifically stating what it is we want to have accomplished. And that is, if we look at the second to the last paragraph, I think we have language in there that, where we ask that the county commissioners censure the planning board members and we need to see some response that that is happening or going to happen and that those offending planning board members either recuse themselves or resign from, from the board. I think we were pretty clear in that letter, but I think maybe we need another letter to the commissioners specifically stating that's our desired outcome.
We can write another letter, Richard. We could write two letters. I'm fine with that. I don't think we're going to get a response and I don't think we're going to see any action on behalf of the commissioners. So it might be worth undertaking and sending a second letter, but I wouldn't hold high hopes that we'll have a favorable response.
I'm doubtful that we'll have a favorable response, too, but I think since we're going through the process of making sure that we have included the wide, cast the widest possible net to include the public in our deliberations with this ratification and readoption, that it may be advisable to, to follow up with a specific request outlining those items.
Would that be the desire of the council? We'll need a majority to support a second letter? Frank, do you have comments first?
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I, I agree in many respects with what Richard had to say and I quite frankly agree with what you had to say even more. This commission has not shown any interest in engaging us in any formal fashion at all, which I find quite frustrating, notwithstanding our numerous overtures. I also find that, I think that the, to the extent we are going to write a letter, I think it would be something to the effect of, thank you for including this as a copy of your letter to the planning board. This does not address any or, any of our concerns or any of the issues that we raised. Thank you very much. I think that's as simple as it needs to be. I think anything more of that, just how we're doing is making a mess.
Agreed.
Is my, is my view of the thing. And I just think, because I don't, I don't think it's fair for them to, or for us to leave them with the impression that being copied on a sentence and a half or two-sentence letter to the planning board addresses any of our concerns or we feel like they have responded to us in any, any manner at all. And I think they should be invited to do so.
Good points.
But that's simply that.
Further comments? I'd agree with Frank on kind of the nature of the letter. If you're okay with that, Richard, we'll just need a showing of hands if...
Yeah, I, I just think it's important that we keep the record absolutely clear in our efforts to communicate with the county commissioners and their unwillingness to reciprocate.
Okay. We'll need a showing of hands after we have the motion on the table to adopt the letter that was sent, which we do have. Let's vote on the motion first and then we'll come back for a showing of hands for a second letter. Jen, did you have any comments?
I would just say that, you know, I, I am in favor of less letters back and forth to the county, seeing that we rarely get anywhere with those letters. We've tried to ask for a meeting and we don't even get meetings. So I would be more hopeful that the planning board members themselves that are maybe the topic of discussion here would have the forethought to recuse themselves when it comes to issues that come before them in relation to, to Whitefish, seeing that there was such distaste and disdain for the city and the members of the city. So I would hold my hopes there a little higher than I would with sending more letters to the county commission itself and hoping for a response.
Thanks, Jen. Further comments before we vote on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign and that passes unanimously, Michelle, which then brings us back to the vote on whether we should send a second letter in the form that I think Frank expressed. Showing of hands for that letter? And I see five hands, so we'll go ahead and I can help prepare that letter with Richard and Frank's help and we'll distribute that for review by the council as well as Angie and Adam. Thanks very much. We'll move on to item 9B. We had requested from the St. Peter Lutheran Church, their community garden project, they had requested an irrigation credit at our last meeting and we requested some data on their actual summer water usage. They provided that. I contacted Craig today and asked him to actually put a dollar amount to the usage, which he's handed us this evening. So pretty minimal costs as far as I can tell compared to what we're rebating back to the church down the road. Craig, any comments on this?
Yeah, the numbers that I applied to those summer consumptions were strictly irrigation dollars. The, the volumes that are calculated there are their, that's their total water consumption for those months. But I, in calculating the, you know, the costs that they would be credited or potentially credited, I just used the irrigation water credit or water value. So there isn't any wastewater attributed to that and it is a, still a reduced rate. So in round numbers, we are, the last two years, we credited an average of about $470, $480 to the community garden. And, you know, those credits start typically in, in April or May and run, you know, all the way through October and November. But, you know, at the peak of the season, those kind of June, July, August numbers for the community garden are in the $80 to $120 range. So I would assume that we'd probably be seeing about the same from, from Lutheran Church, based on the size of the garden.
So your suggestion is what dollar amount?
I, I'm thinking that the dollar amount will probably be closer to roughly $100 a month during the peak summer months, now that they have a dedicated meter for their garden. That meter was just installed last month and so we don't have any data from that yet. The numbers that, that are provided to you, those, those June, July, August numbers are their actual building. You know, that's the total meter consumption. So my, my anticipation is that their numbers will, will go up this year because they have a garden built and a separate dedicated meter for that garden. We just don't have the data yet because they just put the meter in last month. So, so the numbers that you have in your packet, those June, July, August numbers for St. Peter, are their total water consumption bills for the last couple of years, not just irrigation.
And they're still that low?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Thanks, Craig. Richard?
That being the case, Craig, 2015 totals $182, 2016 $174. That's for their total facility use, including their garden, and their garden is much smaller than the community garden. Would it be reasonable, before I make a motion, to limit that to not to exceed, on that irrigation side, not to exceed $200 on that credit?
Yeah. Did they have a garden? Was the garden built in 2015 and 16?
It was in 16. I think they had a garden in 16, didn't they?
I don't think so. No, I think the garden went in last spring.
I thought they had one year of gardening. Maybe I'm in error. It's happened before.
I think they did last year.
They did?
Did they?
Yeah, you know, their letter doesn't state when they constructed the garden or when they allowed community members to begin gardening there, but based on, if that garden was present in 2016, then yes, it's going to be much smaller than the, the community garden on Edgewood and it's likely going to be in the range. I'd say $200 would probably be fair. You know, because we could easily calculate the square footage, you know, of the community gardens and, you know, use, come up with some type of a benchmark number. You know, again, the Whitefish Community Garden, I think the, the maximum allowable credit is $600 and they haven't hit that yet. We did increase it last year, but even last year, they were still only at $450.
According to the Whitefish Pilot Online, the community garden opened May 31, 2000, by May 31, 2016. Although I do believe they did expand this year, I don't know how much more space they expanded into. Got to love Google.
That said, I would make a motion to approve a, an irrigation credit for the St. Peter Lutheran Church Community Garden to, not to exceed $200.
Per year?
Per year.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Barberas. Further discussion on the motion? Frank?
Whereas I agree with the sentiment and I will vote to support this, what I heard from Craig was that he anticipates that the white, that this garden will probably consume in the neighborhood of $100 a month during the high months, which would be June, July, August. And that, that's what he anticipates now that it's fully up and operating. Again, since we're offering a credit not to exceed, it's going to be based upon actual consumption. I personally would be comfortable raising your $200 limit to $350 to manage that problem. Again, it's only a credit versus what's actually used. So if they don't use it, they don't, there's no further advantage to them, to that. And I don't want to encourage them to use it, but at the same time, I, I think we're dealing with a little bit of a, an unknown here and we can quantify it quite easily by doing that and limit the exposure. So I, I would be certainly comfortable and would be happy to move for a friendly amendment to increase that credit to not to exceed $350 based on what Craig anticipates their actual uses to be.
I don't want to spend too much time debating water usage, but I think the argument for $200 is it does encourage water conservation. And, and I think that that's, you know, if it's somebody else's water, use as much as you want. If it's your water, then you start to be a little bit more conservative. That's, that's my thought.
I'm fine with the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign and that carries unanimously as well. Craig, do you want us to follow up with the church or do you want to give them a quick call and let them know it was approved?
No, I can, I can let them know it was approved.
Great. Thanks for digging up these numbers today as well. And we'll move on to item 9C, which is a letter from Stacy Reed with tamarack carriage. This is her second request. As you recall, she came to the council last year and we had some concerns regarding her request to provide tours around Whitefish with a horse and carriage. And I think the big difference with this request or the actual travel routes being proposed, I think initially we had concerns with horse and carriages traveling on some of our busier and, as well as state highways, including Wisconsin Avenue, Highway 93, as well as Baker, as shown on her maps and in her description of her travel routes. It appears to me as though she's eliminated Baker, Wisconsin, as well as 93, although the maps are a bit fuzzy. Any comments or questions from the council on this? Or thoughts for that matter? Frank?
I guess my, again, I'm, I'm sympathetically interested in this in a lot of ways. At the same time, my working knowledge of horses on pavement is not a great thing as a general proposition for the horse. Chief, do we have any issues with this kind, with this routing of, and the use of these roads for horse-drawn carriage through the summer months in terms of either traffic interference or anything else? Are you concerned about it at all? I was addressing Chief.
Chief Dial?
Do you care?
Do, I'm sorry, Frank, I couldn't hear you.
Okay. Now, do you have any concerns about the, the use of a horse-drawn carriage over the roads that are identified here in our map in terms of traffic interference or anything else?
As long as they're appropriately marked, slow-moving vehicle and they have lights, I don't have any.
Thank you.
Jen?
Is there any reason for us to approve an item like this? What's the mechanism for us to approve or not approve something like this?
I'll turn that question to Angie.
So we actually have a, pardon me, an ordinance, and it's a fairly old ordinance, that you can approve routes for things and stopping points for things like, I think it actually says like hot dog stands or, and so this kind of follows under, you can do it as long as, you can do it as long as the city council approves your route.
Okay.
So it's, it's just a really old ordinance.
Okay.
Interesting. Further comments, motion, thoughts? Katie?
I would move to approve the request to give tours around Whitefish with horse and carriage. I think that it could be quite a spectacle and it could be a nice little addition to our town. The applicant has made changes to their route and they have street legal signage and lights and slow-moving vehicle barriers and even a manure picker-upper. So I, I would say I move to approve.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second with a friendly amendment that we are approving the route and the stops for the operation.
It's okay with the second?
Is that the intent with your motion?
That is the intent.
Okay. That was seconded by Counselor Franson. Andy, comment?
I'd kind of offer one more amendment that we just do it for this year and review at the end of the year and see how it works and rather than do it in perpetuity.
Is that okay with the first and second?
That's okay.
Yes.
Okay. I would further suggest that one point she made in her letter was that she has approval from the lodge at Whitefish Lake to use their, you know, area for a turnaround, yet I don't quite have a clear understanding of what would, what route she's suggesting that would bring her horse and carriage to the lodge if she's not intending to use Wisconsin Avenue. Very short trip. So I just think if, when we do, if we do approve this, it should be conditioned that it's, certainly restricts the use on Wisconsin Avenue, Baker and Highway 93, if that's okay with the first and second.
I would further... I would further amend the motion to state that it's only the routes shown on the map in the packet on page 139 marked in black and the stops marked with the red pens.
And that's okay with the first? And that was made by the second, so we're good there. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign and that motion carries unanimously. We will start with Counselor comments and we'll start with Katie tonight.
No comment tonight.
Thanks, Katie. Frank?
The only comment I've got is that it's great to be here in July. One of the things that's a highlight for this entire valley and admittedly something I'm quite interested in, and I think everything, everybody in the city of Whitefish should be as well, is that the event at Rebecca Farms is being held this week and through this weekend. It is probably the largest and most, maybe one of the most premier horse triathlon events that you could possibly ever have. It's larger than anything else in this country. There'll be over 650 horses, including the Young Rider Championships here this weekend. There'll be Olympians. I hope everybody will participate. That facility is supported by one of the families here in Whitefish and so I hope we'll all, all show up and it's a great event. Thanks.
Good luck. Pam?
Nothing tonight.
Thanks, Pam. Jen?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thanks. Andy?
Well, it's summer and I just want to comment on the fact that I'm really happy that the sirens going again. Just for some reason, it's sort of a rite of summer. You don't hear it as much in the winter, but in the summer and your windows are open and you're out and about and it's still kind of late out there and the siren goes off. It's just, I'm glad we have it.
Yep. Thanks, Andy. Richard?
The county commissioners are going to hold their public hearing on August 17 with regards to the proposed 93 South Corridor, south of Whitefish. And I think that the city's response should be thorough and robust and that I'd be happy, as time permits, to work on that or work with Dave on that. And any, I think maybe even a small committee might be helpful so that the commissioners are fully aware that this is the response of the city and that the city is well represented at that August 17 meeting. I think it's a critical meeting and I think that our, our response must be very, very robust.
Dave, were you planning on submitting comments on behalf of the city?
Yeah, we have a bunch of comments on the record that went through the planning board.
Right.
Happy to submit additional comments if there's additional things we want to say beyond what we said previously.
Maybe a recap of what we stated as our concerns earlier? And if you wouldn't mind distributing that letter to the council before it's sent out, I would appreciate it. And if there's anything else we would like to add or comment on. Last I heard, they were actually developing conditions of approval for that corridor plan. Is that correct? And have you seen those conditions yet?
I haven't heard anything about conditions of approval. I mean, they, the planning board recommended approval of that plan with the zoning overlay that had, you know, a bunch of our standards in there.
But it was my understanding that their conditions didn't support the approval, therefore they needed the time to actually craft conditions to support...
Yeah, the staff report that was put together by the county planning director had some concerns about
Right.
...the plan. And so he was revising those things with a new staff report and...
Have you seen that?
It hasn't, no, he hasn't released a copy of that yet, but...
Okay. When that does go out for public review, do you mind emailing that out to us as well?
Sure.
Great. Appreciate it. And then if you just don't mind following up with Richard on the letter. Richard, comment?
Yeah, I, I would like to see us, if at all possible, have time for a discussion on that particular topic at our first meeting in August, which would still make us timely in our response so that it is a unified response from this council.
I would support that.
Showing of hands, please, to add that to the future agenda? And that's unanimous? Thanks, Richard. Good idea. Anything further? Oh, no. I had a similar story to Andy's story from a few weeks ago when you ran into the folks up on the Swift Creek Trail. I was riding out of Haskell Basin about, I don't know, I think last Friday, and I ran into a couple that had, you know, maps pulled up on their phone and I asked, I stopped and gave them directions and I asked where they were from and why they were up here. And they came up specifically to ride the roads within the Stoltz Conservation easement. So I thought that was pretty cool. And they knew friends of friends, of course. But then I proceeded down and onto Reservoir Road and I stopped and I don't know if you've checked it out, but the trail heads, you know, developed now. It's not finalized, of course, but you can, starting to come together. I rode the first, I probably shouldn't be saying this, but I rode the first 600 feet of trail and met the contractor and observed some of the construction. It's just going to be fantastic. And just a quick update related to the trail project is we've been meeting with Stoltz, Maria, Angie, and Paul McKenzie the last couple of weeks and Heidi, of course, regarding the trail component of the easement on Stoltz. And what was initially contemplated is about an eight to 10 acre easement to accommodate the trail footprint plus a narrow buffer. Looks like now it's probably going to be on the order of about an 18 to 20 acre requirement. And that's largely due to the fact that in order, because it's going to be a new tract of record, the property pin needs to be set at each, at each angle along the trail corridor. And so a quick estimate was made and there would be upwards of 1,700 pieces of rebar and survey caps installed along the 4.2 miles of trail. So we sat down with Stoltz and I think we renegotiated an agreement that's going to work for everyone. And so we're going to try to minimize the number of steel rebar and survey caps that go on the ground. And Stoltz has graciously offered to be very flexible, you know, with that acreage. Again, in the spirit of the original agreement, trying to keep it as minimal as possible. But we're going to get that underway and the surveying is actually underway as we speak, which is great news with, I think, the anticipation to be done in October. Is that still the case with the whole project? So, pretty exciting stuff. That's all I had. Anything further from staff or council? We are adjourned. Thanks.